A long time taking the opportunity to exhort our, our people to, to any sort of action, but I think it's time to start doing that again. And so I'd like to take this opportunity to remind everybody that the school district is coming to a critical juncture where we're considering the, the building of a brand-new middle high school, which is a critical piece of the future, I think, for the Lunenburg Public School District. And so I would like to make everyone aware that in order for a school to be built, it has to be approved by the town, and there are two votes that have to be passed in order for this building to move forward. First is a town meeting vote, which should happen probably the first Tuesday after, you have a date?
Yep.
Is it the first Tuesday after New Year's?
It's the 7th.
Okay, it's the 7th of January. That's a two-thirds vote, so we'd encourage anybody who wants to support the schools to show up at that town meeting and vote. And the following Saturday, which should be the 11th, is all, will be a town election, and that will require 50 percent plus one in order for the, the article to pass. So I'd encourage everybody to get informed. There's all sorts of information on the internet. Mike will be giving an update on the building project later on today. If you have questions, comments, feedback, anything you need to know, you can contact the superintendent, you can contact any of us. All of our email addresses are public. You can find them on the school website. If you have questions, I'm in the phone book, you can call me. And we'd love to engage with anybody who has questions or concerns. Okay, so with that, we don't actually have minutes to approve, right?
No.
Okay. And so we'll move on to, there are warrants on the table and a line item transfer.
We do have one line item transfer, Dr. Berthium and members of the committee, that we're proposing moving $600 that was in the high school line for business supplies to the high school technology line, and that would take that balance up to 1,100, and it would move the business ed supply line down to 2-0. The reason for this is our robotics program at the high school is in need of some additional equipment, and we wanted to make sure that, that we make this move so we can purchase that equipment from a line that's appropriate to do so. So it doesn't really change the bottom line, it doesn't change the bottom line in terms of the high school allocation, but it does make sure that the purchase will be moving forward. And it does not impact the line where this was taken from because they basically have decided with the shift in the curriculum that those supplies that were previously slated for that line will not be necessary because of the uptick in terms of moving to the engineering and, and robotics.
Okay. Just one thing I did forget to mention, that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on live television. Any questions on the line item transfer? Mrs. Combs, you have a superintendent's report?
I do, thank you. And this is one of my favorite meetings of the year because this is the meeting that I get to recognize one of our outstanding students that we have here in Lunenburg. You know, we have very many of them, but each year the superintendent's association in each community asks the superintendents to select one student from the community who has achieved high academically as well as been a leader, a mentor, and a model for other students. And the individual that I've selected this year is certainly that in spades. This young woman is an individual who's taken our most rigorous coursework at Lunenburg High School and is the top-ranked student in the class. This young woman is an AP scholar, she's received a merit scholarship as well, she's received an Award of Excellence from the National Academy of Future Physicians and Medical Scientists. She's received several academic excellence awards throughout her career at Lunenburg High School, including awards in honors biology, geometry, Spanish, and pre-calculus. Her leadership is also exceptionally strong and a good model for others in that she has served as secretary of the student council. She's served on the student council since 2010 and also served as captain of her JV basketball team. She's participated in the WPI Launch Program for Chemistry and Biochemistry, she was vice president of her freshman class, and she's attended numerous conferences on student leadership at Nichols College as well. She's a member of the National Honor Society at Lunenburg High School, the math team, and also the National Society of High School Scholars. She's participated in athletics, and she's also spent her extra time working and volunteering in the community. And so it's, it's with a great deal of pleasure that I introduce to you the 2013 Superintendent's Scholar from the Lunenburg Public Schools, Alana Johansson.
I'm sorry. Elena.
I apologize. I'd like to, Elena, just share with you this certificate. It's a certificate of academic excellence, and it's presented to you having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, and I award this certificate of academic excellence to you. And I congratulate and thank you for everything.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Elena, I know your parents are here, and perhaps you'd like to introduce them at this time.
My mom, Holly, and my father, David.
And a round of applause. And Elena, if you have anything you'd like to add? I have your quote up there, I don't know if you'd like me to share it or if you'd like to share it, because it really captures, I think, the essence of what I've seen from you all these years in terms of your motivation. So you don't need to do that, I'll do that when I get back. And, but if you'd like to say a few words, please do.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like to thank my teachers who have, like, pushed me through my 12 years of school. It's been a long time, and they've really, you know, paid a lot of attention to me and just helped me get through these past 12 years. And my parents, who love me always, always. Thanks for pushing me and staying behind me.
Well, Elena, we thank you for everything you've contributed, and we know there's a very bright future ahead of you. And thanks for all you've done, and we'll look forward to seeing you a lot this senior year.
Thank you.
The scholar is recognized at a banquet, a luncheon, that all scholars from Worcester County are able to attend, the Worcester County Roundtable of Superintendents put that on. And so we'll be going in, in January to that, and each individual that is selected gets to provide a quote that goes into the program. And this is Elena's quote. "It matters not how straight the gate, how charged with punishments the scroll; I am a master of my faith, I am the captain of my soul." And that, of course, is the last stanza from Invictus.
Thank you.
Mr. Londa is here, continuing the superintendent's report. I've asked him to come talk to you about a situation that has occurred since we've turned on the heat at Lunenburg High School. So, Mr. Londa?
I mean, the heat's on already?
The heat is on.
Good evening. We didn't, you know, move into the heating season on October 15th. We have all the, all the systems up and running, and we did, we did have a problem at Lunenburg High School that is, actually started developing last year. In February of last year, we had one week where we had extremely cold temperatures, you know, negative, below-zero temperatures, and we ran really high temperatures and high pressures, and we noticed we had an area that had a small leak at that time. After that week ended, we didn't have any other leak there for the rest of the year. So as we came into this heating season, we were a little surprised, but not completely shocked, that the leak that we had on that cold week re-returned. So we obviously realized that, you know, we're going to get much, much colder temperatures, which means we'll be running much higher temperatures and pressures on the boiler system. So this leak is something we're going to wind up having to deal with. It, you know, it represents only a small area right now, however, we, to be able to get into this area, we don't have access to, so we're really not sure exactly what we're going to find, but we know that we need an asbestos contractor to come in to remove the sealing material, which is a spray-on texture that has been, been found positive for asbestos. After they do that, they're going to have to open the ceiling up, in which case then we're going to find, you know, heating pipes with asbestos on them as well, that's going to be, have to be removed, and, and any damage asbestos cleaned up at that point. And once we get that done, then we will be moving into, you know, making a repair on the pipes, and then re-insulating and then reclosing the ceiling back up. We have a contractor that's already under contract to come in on this, the week of December 23rd, as an asbestos contractor, so we're essentially going to wait until then to deal with it. Right now, it's not a bad leak, but this is just, obviously, something we just can't live with for the next three years. So we have to take, you know, a more aggressive approach here and, and open this area up. So it will wind up being a pretty ugly area when we get done with it, because we're not going to be able to really feather this in with the existing ceilings particularly well. But we will get a ceiling back up in place and, and get the leak corrected. The cost for this is pretty much unknown at this point. We have a cost to have the asbestos contractor to come in, but he was only going to do a minor amount of work in this area. Now we're essentially getting into an area where we really don't know the, the full scope of, you know. We do have funds still in the capital article for asbestos removal that will help with, with the demolition.
Any questions for John?
Mr. Londa has also been working with his staff in terms of looking at the materials across the district and making sure that we're moving things out that need to be moved out, damaged items, et cetera. And, Mr. Londa, you have a list of things that I believe are primarily from the pasios school that you're wanting us to take some action on later on this evening.
That's correct. The items on here were, with the exception, I think, of one item, which was a language lab that came out of the high school, and it was bought, I think, like, 1999, 2000, and this was no longer being used by the high school. All the other items on the list are things that were left behind as we reconfigured, and they are all items that are either in generally poor condition or do not meet our needs, either because they don't meet fire code. So they're, so a list of things that we think that, you know, we've offered them up to the principals from all the schools, and there really weren't any takers. We're not looking to completely empty out the pasios with this. We're, you know, we had other items that were on there, oak desks, teacher desks, furniture that matched what we use in the other schools, and most of all of that is being kept. If it was damaged, however, it would appear on this list. But for the most part, we, we also kept all the original furniture for the pasios, and, you know, on the idea that, you know, if we ever had to go back in here, that we would have these, what would be very expensive to replace items. So this is not a complete list, but it's a list of things that we think will be prudent to, to move out of the pasios at this point.
And where would these materials go? What happens to them?
Mr. Londa?
You know, we have a couple of options on it, you know, we, we would offer them up to any of the town departments and see if anybody else would need this, although many of the items are probably not appropriate for, for the town departments because they're either really small chairs or desks. And after that, we, we would either look to see if we might do some kind of a yard sale, and then beyond that, we, we do have contacts with, with a company that are trying to move things out of the country to third-world countries such as Haiti, and they take things that are, are in pretty poor condition, but they, they put a lot of effort into trying to bring them back so they can use them in those kinds of situations. Those are not, that's not a free program, it's one that they do look to us to provide some, some monetary funds to be able to make that happen. So we have not, not at this point done anything with them beyond just saying, look, we're looking at these kinds of things. But that also becomes the kind of company that we probably would be looking to contract with if we were looking to empty out the high school in 2016, because obviously we want to move quite a bit of furniture and things left behind at that point, you know, if the high school project went forward.
Okay.
So we have, we do have a scheme on how to get rid of these things.
Do we need to vote to approve?
I think we can take that up later on in the agenda.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, yeah, just fits better. Wanted to, I, I hope all of you were able to come out and join us for a delightful day on homecoming and see once again the efforts of the students around the floats, some very, a great theme this year, another very strong theme, but I found it particularly endearing in that it really focused upon the seasons and the landmarks of Lunenburg. And the students all did just a really fabulous job, and they were supported very warmly and kindly, and with a lot of hours from a lot of parent volunteers as well as the staff at Lunenburg High School. And it was another great parade and, and celebration of something that's pretty uniquely Lunenburg at this point in time, and always a nice time for the community to come together. Of course, that was followed by another great Lunenburg tradition of the PTO Haunted House, which was last Friday, and another really enjoyable time for families to come out. And things got spookier, as they say, as the evening went on, but Kelly Cosmos was there talking about science and doing exciting things with students, and, and the high school clubs were there doing some fundraising to help support their activities and also providing some great refreshments along the way to the, the parents that attended. So our thanks to the PTO and all their volunteers and all those spooky people that were there in the gym at TCP making this event happen for everyone. I wanted to let you know that, or remind everyone that November 8th, this Friday, day after tomorrow, will be another full-day professional development day for us here in Lunenburg, and our faculties will be really focused on doing a lot of work with regard to the curriculum, working to update their curriculum maps, looking at some of the model curriculum units, brushing up and reviewing their own instructional units to make them as strong as possible. And our staff are really looking forward to a very, very productive, hard-working day, concentrating on our instructional program through making those improvements to our curriculum and our lesson design, and we're looking forward to that opportunity. We're going to welcome the treasurer Grossman here to tour Lunenburg High School. Treasurer Grossman is going to be in the area, and he also serves as the chair of the Mass School Building Authority. So we reached out to Representative Benson and asked if she might invite the treasurer to come and visit us. We have some students that will be taking the treasurer through Lunenburg High School and giving him a firsthand look at, at what the building is, and also hearing from our students about the pride that they have and the kind of educational program that they have and how the building fits into all of that. So we're looking forward to seeing the treasurer on Friday as well. I wanted to also make you aware that the state is in the process of revising the kinds of assessments that they'll start administering on an annual basis to parents, or to students, perhaps in the future. And the why I say perhaps in the future is the fact that these are called the PARC assessments, and they are considered to be more aligned with the, the Common Core, which, you know, we've been revising our curriculum to make sure that it's aligned with the Common Core for the last several years now. Someone once said that PARC maybe should be better called just MCAS 2. So for what it's worth, the way that this happens is that they start piloting these assessments. And PARC is also being piloted across the country in various states. The impact on our students, however, is that not all of our students will be taking the PARC, only a random sample is, is generated in order to be able to build these very large, nationally-referenced assessments. And so some of our students will have the distinct opportunity to take their MCAS assessments and then also have the PARC assessments this year. Some of the PARC will be done on computers, it's administered electronically, and we provided information to the state relative to our capacity in terms of delivering an assessment in that manner. And the, the standards that are required to do that are certainly, our, our technology infrastructure does fit that. And so we'll see these assessments happening primarily at the middle school and the eighth grade at the high school. At this point in time have been the, the grade levels that have been identified for, to take the PARC. But I wanted to at least make the committee and the public aware that this is, is coming in March, and as we get more information, we'll certainly be sharing that information with the committee and the community and the parents as well, so. Okay. And I have one other report of, that I'd like to share as part of the superintendent's report, Dr. Berthium. This, annually, we look at our Title I program. We receive federal funds in order to provide some additional instruction and support to students in both reading as well as in the areas of mathematics. And we take some time, last year, we took some time in our self-evaluation as part of our comprehensive program review that was done, the coordinated program review that was done in special education, English language learner programs, the Title I program was part of that, as well as the civil rights is what's part of that coordinated program review. And we, as a result of that, were made aware that there are several new documents and regulations and forms and contracts that are required as part of this, contracts with parents and students in terms of what they can expect from the teachers in the school as well as what's expected from the learners in terms of participation and the parents. There's an advisory through our PACSEL, Title I parents have representation there and are invited to those meetings. And we will continue this year to work on developing and making sure that our policy and procedures and all the forms that we're using are compliant with the regulations as defined. And then also, I, the good news and the very positive news around our Title I program is that our students are very much benefiting from this additional support. 67% of the students scored proficient last year on the MCAS assessment after receiving support services, and 33% of the students scored in the upper range of needs improvement. So they were within that next core trial. So with the continued support, we fully anticipate that they'll be able to move from that needs improvement into the proficient range. And we're also very proud of the fact that we have ongoing monitoring systems in place for the students, formative assessment that takes place in order to make sure that the kinds of interventions and the things that the tutors, as well as the teachers that are providing these additional instructional supports and time to the students, that it's making a difference, and doing that sooner rather than later. And so those checks are done on a regular basis, and then we have teacher support teams that are available to help the teacher and the Title I teachers really brainstorm through and determine if interventions are not working, what other kinds of interventions may be better in that place. And so that process is well-established within the school district. So overall, it's a very positive review of the program after looking at the student performance data. We'll continue to implement the policy and procedural changes. We'll, we're looking at the area of mathematics. The data seem to indicate that our performance, the trend line was not as steep for our students receiving support in mathematics areas, so we're going to focus on that a bit more. And we're also going to continue to utilize that process in terms of making sure that as we're intervening, as we're providing additional supports, that we're checking in to make sure that there's a benefit coming from that, and if not, changing what we're doing in order to not waste the students' time so they can continue to excel and achieve academically. So that's an overview of the Title I program for this year.
Okay. Can we go back to the assessment exercise for a minute?
The PARC?
The PARC.
The PARC, yes.
Are students are not under-assessed?
No.
At the ti, at the moment? Is there, there are other models, I'm sure, that could be used to develop testing questions other than actually implementing them during the school day? Has the PARC team considered using, you know, some other model?
Not that I'm aware of, and we have made certainly the DESE aware of our concerns about the amount of time that's going to be focused on assessment. At one point in time, there was some consideration of, well, maybe those students won't need to take MCAS, but because of the way that there's so many things that are calculated with those scores removing a half or a third of your population from that assessment becomes quite problematic, I think, as we work through the statistics and discussions about that. And parents look forward to receiving the results on their students from the MCAS. They won't receive any information around the PARC. We have really not been provided an option of not participating, the random sample was out there, and the State Board of Education made a commitment to work in looking at this as a transitional time. They haven't fully committed to switching to the PARC in reading the minutes and the information about this, but they have committed as a state, and I think that's tied to the race to the top funding is, is part of what is, is driving that as well, to participating in the pilots.
Is it students in grades three through 10 that will be taking the?
Eight.
Eight. Oh, just, just eight through?
Just the eighth grade. The 10th graders aren't.
Okay.
Is the goal to replace the MCAS with this?
It is.
Okay.
That's what the proposal is.
And so it's about?
It's a new generation of assessment.
And we are required to participate in the pilot?
We are, along with a lot of other districts in Massachusetts and several states.
And you anticipate it's a third to a half of the eighth graders that will participate in that?
It's, it's two classrooms.
You don't know yet.
It's two classrooms, I believe, at each one of the assessed grade levels is the information that we have now.
I see, so they're spreading the grade levels amongst different communities? Is that what's happening, to test the other?
Yes, it's not, it's not every student and it's not every grade level, but they haven't finalized, and what we have noticed is that as some states drop out, the states that are remaining in terms of participating in the pilot, more of their students are then asked to participate in the pilot. Is this a topic that you would like me to bring some additional information back to the committee?
I think we should talk about this again, because if there's a way to not take another, how many hours is this? If it's anything like the MCAS, we're talking about throwing another day or two or more of potential student learning out the window, and that's really, in my mind, not acceptable.
And I'm wondering what happens in the other classes? And, you know, for the eighth graders, you were not all in one.
Right.
You know, it's not one homeroom going to a whole bunch. You know, what happens? I mean, I'm sure the teachers are accommodating, I'm just thinking they, it's slightly nightmarish.
Yes, yes. So let me go back, and we continue to get updates from the DESE as well as the PARC individuals, and I will collect the most recent information that we have and bring back that information to you, and then a more comprehensive overview at our to you and then a more comprehensive overview at our next meeting then.
So, the PARK organization, is it a for-profit company?
PARK is a consortium. They're working through a lot of the universities at this point in time, but there is corporations involved in assisting with this.
Okay.
And just a quick look at the, their page. Our current commissioner of Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Mitchell Chester, is actually the chair of the PARK governing board in Massachusetts, is one of the governing states in the PARK consortium. It's made up of a number of states.
Right. That doesn't actually give me a warm fuzzy feeling.
Just, just the facts.
Okay. Why don't we move on? School building committee report, Mike?
Sure. We've had a number of meetings since we last met. The school building committee met on October the 23rd. We continue to work with the design team, as well as our program manager, on areas that we can make sure that we're producing the most cost-effective, educationally sound solution for the voters. And the working group, which is really tasked with doing that, met again on the 24th. And after some discussion with the design manager, we see several areas that when we do get to design development, that we think that we are safe to say that we can reduce those costs now without, you know, seeing any, any change to the educational value of the building. As a result of that, we, the working group recommended and to the school building committee that we reduce the design contingency by a million dollars, which took a million dollars out of the project and reduced directly from the local share.
That's great.
And on the 30th, the building committee unanimously approved those changes. That evening, we had our first forum at the high school, which was also game six of the World Series. And we were really quite happy to see the number of folks that showed up, even though it was game six of the World Series. So, we saw about 50, between 50 and 60 folks show up. It was very thoughtful discussion. It was very, questions to be informed. There was a lot of good feedback. At the end, we got a lot of good feedback from the audience about the presentation itself, its clarity, and the fact that we were able to, to answer so many of the folks' So, the, this, yesterday, we met with the Massachusetts School Building Authority in a budget and scope meeting. And that was basically to solidify the scope project, to solidify the dollar amounts. So, right now, the total project stands at about $72.9 million with the MSBA grant at $36.3 million. The MSBA will meet now on the 20th of this month with the board, and that will be the board approval of this budget and scope, at which point we are entering a budget and scope agreement with the MS, we are entering an agreement with the MSBA, which will allow us to go to town meeting, which, as you said earlier, will be, town meeting is scheduled for January the 7th, and the town ballot will be January the 11th. We have additional meetings coming up. We have a number coming up this month. We'll be meeting again with the folks at the senior center, but the different groups. We'll be meeting with the friendly seniors group. We'll also be meeting with the, the governing body of the senior center. We have several, you know, folks that have invited us into their homes and invited their neighbors. We have three of those scheduled between now and the beginning of December. And then the final forums will be on December the 5th. One will be at 3:00 PM in the cafeteria. The other will be 7:00 PM in the auditorium. On a side note, the building reuse committee continues its work and expects to have a recommendation by mid-December to go along with the presentation to the town of the, of the warrant for the debt exclusion override.
Great.
Any questions?
Okay. So, the takeaway is the project's still moving forward?
Correct.
Things are getting further solidified? And we have upcoming votes in January that everyone should be ready to go and participate in. Is that about it?
That's about it. And again, to reassure everyone that the group has worked as diligently as possible to drive costs to their, you know, their most rational number that gives us the best educational result.
Right. Great. Thank you. Okay. In new business, we have PTO donations.
We do. I got a call from the PTO today and regrettably, they weren't able to join us, but we'll be back. But I do have some other donations that I'd like to bring to your attention, if I may. First, we have received in support, again, of Nature's Classroom scholarships from the Lunenburg Police Relief Association. $720 was donated by the Relief Association. And also, another one of the give with target donations or money that's generated, $51 for Turkey Hill Middle School as a result of parents identifying Turkey Hill Middle School as the area that they want that target fund to go to. So, I recommend acceptance of these with our appreciation and at this point in time.
So, moved?
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And our thanks to all who donate. It's great. Okay. We have our nursing services budget.
Ms. Carrie Ford, who's the coordinator of our nurses program and health program, is here to present the budget for this upcoming, the proposed budget for FY15. Welcome, Ms. Ford. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You are opening budget season for us.
That's so exciting. What an honor. Make it really brief so you don't get. You have all my requests, I believe? Does it show up somewhere? I don't know where. An increase, I'm requesting an increase for the physician as that has been steady for many, many years. This only goes back to '09, but I kind of think it might go back to '05, that that's been unchanged. And I'm able to keep the supply budget as it is because I was, received some EpiPens, school supplied EpiPens at no cost, which saves us just over $700. So, even though supplies costs increase, I don't need to request that because I got those EpiPens at no cost. And, and as you can see, that's about it. That's my request.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
Just, you know, it's a, it's a minor amount, but it's just, the only thing I have a question about is the, we've running for years with the same allocation for the school physician.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it looks like it's a little bit different in the upcoming request. Is that inaccurate?
According to my previous predecessor, she's often made requests and it's not happened. And her recommendation was every now and again, make the request.
Okay.
He does, obviously, as illnesses, chronic illnesses, and our jobs increase, so does his input and assistance to us. So.
Right. And for those people in the audience, the change is from $3,500 to $4,000, the requested change.
Yeah, it's a minor amount, but I was just curious. Yes.
Any other questions?
Where did you get the EpiPens? How'd you get those?
There's a program out there through a pharmacist called EpiPens for Schools. And you just have to request it, get a physician's, my physician's prescriptions. And if they have them, they give them.
So, you had to kind of apply for it?
I'm sorry?
You had to apply for it or send something in to get?
Yeah, just documenting it.
Great. Well, thank you.
Yay for us. Yeah. It is, it's a huge offset. I mean, it's $720 to supply EpiPens to all, all buildings.
Right. $700 out of a, you know, $4,000 budget, so that's?
It is a lot.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. A special ed overview update and proposed 15 budget.
Ms. Bayhus is here with us to make, I believe, what might be her first presentation to the board since joining us in, in July.
What a lovely act to follow with such a lovely budget. I know, I know. Someday, someday.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. All right. So, I'm looking at this and I, my special ed, the, oh, where did it go? Presentation's actually the sixth, not the fifth, so I apologize for that, my first error on the, on the presentation. But what I wanted to do is, Loxie had asked me about presenting to you all and giving you an overview of special education and how it affects especially the budgetary process. So, I sat down and I looked, tried to look at it from what information I thought you all may want from me. So, I'm not going to get into detail about the IEP and all the different pages and all the different parts of the IEP and the referral process, but I'm, I'm going at it from the law, the regulations, the history of it, and then also what constitutes a least restrictive environment. And then from there, I can answer any questions you've got. And if you need me to expand it after the fact, I can always come back and give you more information if there's specific areas that you really would like more, more information on. Okay? So, starting with special education and understanding all the W's, the who, the whats, the whens, the whys, and that. So, what is special education? It is the education of students with special needs in a way that addresses the student's individual differences and needs. The definition goes on to talk about the process involving individually planned and systematically monitored arrangement of teaching procedures, adapted equipment, materials, accessible settings, and other interventions designed to help learners with special needs achieve a higher level of personal self-sufficiency and success in school and community than would be available if the student were only given access in a typical classroom education. Or more simply put, it's specialized instructional related services for students with disabilities ages three to 22 who have not yet graduated. And the goal is to provide accommodations, support, and remediation to help the children with disabilities make progress in the LRE, or least restrictive environment. We have lots of acronyms in special ed, and it has started way back in the 1970s, actually, which is the next one. When did this all happen? So, before 1975, children with disabilities were mostly denied an education solely on the basis of their disabilities. They were excluded from education, which, when I look at the perspective of it, I was just a little tyke at this time, so it actually wasn't, it was a while ago now, but when you think of the 70s, prior to that, the fact that a lot of these students would not have been in our schools is still shocking to me when I look at the whole perspective of things and how far we've come in that time. So, in 1975, our first big acronym took hold. It was the Education of All Handicapped Children Act, EAHCA, also referred to as PL94142, which is what I always think of it as. And it was mandated then that all school districts provide education to students with disabilities for a free, appropriate, public education, which is FAP, which is what we still hear about today. In 1990, that bill was amended, and then it became the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is now IDEA, which is what I think most of us are familiar with hearing. And the biggest change for that was that it was the addition of transition services for students with disabilities. So, we were then required to look at outcomes in assisting students with disabilities in transitioning from high school to post-secondary life, which has kind of come full circle because in the last five years, that's again become a big focus for students and the transitioning from after school, from school to after with work and post-secondary education. Then in 1997, it was reauthorized. And with this, students with disabilities were to be included on state and district-wide assessments. And also, regular education teachers were now required to be a member of the team, which I hadn't realized that until I started putting this presentation together. And again, it was, really? Like, up until 1997, the regular education teachers weren't required to be part of the team. So, again, we learned something new every day, and this was something else that, that looked, again, just a perspective taking on it, on how far we've come since then. In 2001, we had No Child Left Behind, NCLB. And with that, all students were required, even with disabilities, to be proficient in math and reading by the year of 2014. And then in 2004, IDEA was reauthorized again. And in this, the biggest change called for more accountability at the state and local levels as more data on outcomes is required. And another notable change involves school districts providing adequate instruction and intervention for students to help keep them out of special education. So, again, a little bit more of a different shift. Now, we're looking at more data-driven decisions and actually looking to support these students so that they don't, so they don't need special education, which is going to mean more early So, what do these laws and regulations mean to us now? If the child's eligible to receive special education services, the team develops and implements an appropriate IEP based on evaluation results to meet the needs of the students. And then based on the IEP, the team must determine the student's placement. So, you've got to determine first what the child needs, and then you can talk about where that placement needs to be for that child. And again, you've got to ensure that services are provided in the least restrictive environment. And that's the LRE. What does it really mean? Okay? A lot of times, I'm sitting around meetings and people say, well, what does FAP really mean and what does LRE really mean? So, I wanted to spell it out a little bit for you here. What it means is, to the maximum extent appropriate, children with disabilities are educated with children who are non-disabled, and special classes, separate schooling, or other removal of children with disabilities from the regular educational environment occurs only if the nature of the severity of the disability is such that education in regular classes with the use of supplementary aids and services cannot be achieved satisfactorily. And that's the big question that the team sit down and discuss. Placement decisions must be based on a child's unique needs and IEP, not on administrative convenience, disability program label, or allocation of funds. And what are the LEA requirements for the LRE? And that's all of us. And what are our requirements as the LEA? So, we must have a continuum of alternative placements to meet the needs of students with disabilities for special ed and related services. The continuum refers to the entire spectrum of placements where a student's special education program can be implemented. And with that, here's our continuum of services. We have from least restrictive to most restrictive. Of course, you've got full inclusion. Then from there, you come up with a related service only, so a child could still be in full inclusion, but might receive some speech, OT, PG services. Then you've got partial inclusion, where they may be pulled out for a certain amount of time. Substantially separate is when they need to be out of the classroom more than 61% of their day. Other public school is one that a lot of people often don't realize. Sometimes there might be a district, a neighboring district, who might have a sub-separate program. Our sub-separate program might be completely full, or we might not have a developed program for that, but a neighboring district might. And in those cases, sometimes school committees or superintendents will talk amongst, whether it's a collaborative or with the, the other superintendents or those directors, to see if maybe that child can be put into a neighboring school district's public school. Doesn't happen very often, but when it does, it's great to be able to have that alternative. The next, least restrictive is a collaborative placement. Then we move on to where there could be a private school placement or a residential school placement. And then the one that is most surprising, I think, that we don't often think about is the most restrictive placement is the home hospital tutoring piece. Okay? Because those students are either educated in the hospital, either we send somebody or the hospital has somebody there to provide the tutoring, or in the home, where the child isn't with peers, isn't with students their own age at all, they're, they're in their home. So, that's why they consider that the most restrictive placement of all. Children with disabilities must always be considered general education students first. Therefore, the LRE consideration on the continuum always begins in the regular education classroom. And with other alternatives being explored only after data and the team determined a more restrictive setting is needed. Okay? So, we always go back, and you'll hear me, if you're at team meetings with me, if you listen to my staff, is there going to get to know me and get to hear me more and more, I will always go back to, we need to see the data. I need to see what the child's been able to do in the least restrictive environment before we jump even one or two or three steps up on that continuum. This is why it's so important to have procedures and policies in place that are consistent, thoughtful of the process, and use data to inform our decisions so that we have the best learning opportunities possible for all of the students in Lunenburg. I'm committed to the process and all of the students in the district, and I look forward to working with all of you to achieve positive outcomes for students. And then if you have any questions now or at a later time about special ed, you can feel free to let me know. But it is a process, and it's hard sometimes when you're sitting on your end and you're looking at the budgets and you're looking at the nurse's budget and how hers may have increased a small amount, whereas I look at that and I'm like, whoa, that's, that's a day in the park for me when it comes to a student who may- when it comes to a student who may move in and need, you know, a $200,000 placement off the top, or services that might increase a budget, and you'll see in me $14,000 or $15,000 in a line item like that. I understand that. I've seen both sides of it, and I'll always look to try to find that balance of what makes sense, least restrictive environment, free and appropriate education, realizing that it's all one pot of money and that things have to, there's a give and take on both sides. So I'm always into, how can we, how can we build the capacity within the district, regular and special ed students, so that everyone is served equally, because it's not fair to do one based on the other, I think. Any questions in this part of it?
Nope. For you guys?
Alright. So from there, I'm
Thank you for taking the time to put that together.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. More than happy to do it. And so now for... Let me see, is this the one that I need? Yes. So for my budget this year, again, I've looked at the trend, and as I'm here longer, I'll have a better trend from what I've brought forward to you and then what's actually taken place throughout the year. I love that you all already have that trend, like from '09 to now, which is great. The column that I'm probably going to be including in mine as the years go on is what I've asked for and then what's actually been projected at the end, so that I can see how well my projections are with how they end up at the end of that. Like I said, taking in mind that a move-in up to the district could throw any line item out of whack, and there's really no way to prepare for that. So, some of the line items, of course, have remained the same. I've level-funded the mileage reimbursement, the office supplies, the admin fees for the collaborative, travel expenses. My first increase that I've asked for is in home hospital tutoring, and that, again, it's looking at the trend. Our line item budget right now is $3,500, and that's already been expended. We've had seven to eight students already from the high school who have been placed in hospital settings, which is very concerning when you think about it's only November, and I've already had to sign off that quite a few students are in hospital settings for one reason or another and needing that kind of most restrictive service at this point. So that tutoring, why I've increased it to seven is because if we've already expended the $3,500 right up to this point in the year, I know that I'm going to need more, so I want to make sure that I've, I've done my due diligence in trying to be as accurate as possible for what those needs might actually be. And that's nothing that can be predicted. I'm hoping that it goes down. I'm always hoping it goes down, but the realist in me tells me that this is a trend that I've seen in the past years at my previous district. So I don't necessarily see it decreasing overnight. The next one is the contracted related services line. This one I've increased to 115, and when I've, when I analyzed what's gone on so far, we've had a move-in coming to town where we've needed some additional consultation with a deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher that we had to contract through the collaborative for. We've also had additional needs for a consultant that comes in and looks at our FM systems. Those are the auditory equipment that we need for students. We've got quite a few in the district lately, and you'll see that increase in another line. But we have someone through Children's Hospital, and I actually know her through Hudson as well. She was in Hudson, and she does a really good job. So I was very excited to see that she's also been contracted here. She coordinates, so that when we have students who might move out or who might not need a system anymore, she's the expert who already knows, I can take this piece off of this one and put it on this one to kind of build new systems, which our speech and language pathologists would not be able to have that information because of the turnover of the equipment and how often they change and the different things with the ear piecings and the mold, the ear molds that have to be made for these students. So, that's another part of that, of that line item and where it's increased. And it's already increased $12,000 this year, too, for, for other students' needs throughout the district based on IEP needs. So although I know that it's, it's a big increase, it is one where, again, I've seen a trend, and so I just want to try to be as realistic as possible with it. The next one is, let me see, contracted evaluations. That takes into students who need assessments in different languages. So if they can't take, if they can't have an assessment in English, they might need it in Spanish, in Portuguese, in Chinese. We have to find evaluators who can do that. That's not something that we can hire somebody in-house to do, usually. And it's also not, it's not implemented with fidelity. If we have somebody say, we have a Spanish-speaking person in the district, a teacher who could come and, and sit with our school evaluator, our school psychologist, and interpret the test as she's giving it, that's not appropriate either, so we really have to look outside to get contractors in for that. The other thing are the independent education evaluation consents. I've already received five or six of them this year already, and that's in the laws and regulations. If parents are not satisfied with the school district's evaluations, it is their right to request that they go and seek a private evaluation. I do expect state rates to be upheld. Hospitals have different rates as well. So I do have forms that I've sent off and started with that in town that we didn't have previously, so, so it's nice that I was able to bring that over and customize it for Lunenburg, so that we have a process that's followed here for that. But we have had five or six already. Sometimes parents don't always go through with all of the evaluations, but again, I want to make sure that we have enough funding available to be able to cover that, so that it's not coming out of other line items. So that's why the increase is in that line. Professional development for special ed, it's been zero-funded along the way. I put $10,000 in only because our professional development grant has been cut over the years. I want to say, I believe, the last year, the year before FY13, the grant was $12,000, and that met our needs. It was cut this year almost in half to $6,800. So I'm looking forward and saying, well, if they cut it half last year, I'm guessing they're going to cut it again. And I'll get back to why I think that that is so important to have the PD in there. Actually, I'll go ahead now. We have our BCBA, our new BCBA, and so I want to continue to have support for that person to be able to reach out and have consultations with PhD-level services, service providers, to help improve her practices and to make sure that, that we're delivering the best services possible in district. The other thing is, we have, our ELL population has increased significantly. And so the thought process is to start training some of our teachers to be able to have these students in their class and be able to have, give them some effective teaching strategies with them. And our ELL coordinator slash teacher can't provide that for everybody, so we've got to start getting some PD in here for that. And then the other line on PD is for the Woodcock Johnson III is what we currently use for some of our testing, our standardized testing. They're coming out with a new Woodcock Johnson IV in the fall of 2014, I've been told. And I know a lot of our teachers haven't been trained in the Woodcock Johnson recently, and so I'd like to bring somebody in to really give some in-depth consultation on that, because really, the better we're able to give these tests and interpret these tests and what those results mean, the better services we can give our students and hopefully close those gaps for them. So that's the reason for the line item, in that if we get a good turnaround on our grant, then we wouldn't necessarily need that money in there for that line item. The general school supplies, I know that that's been pushed back into each of the school buildings, which is great. It's fantastic that the school principals are seeing what the needs are for the special education teachers and making that a part of their budget. But the monies that I did put in there were for our BCBA and our ELL coordinator, so that they can have supplies. And I felt because they're district-wide, that it would be better coming under me. I had talked to Loxie, and we definitely at some point could ferret out if there are certain things that are school-based. But I think for the most part, for me to be able to keep a handle on that, on their supplies and know that they are district-wide supplies that are being hired, are being bought, that it would be better in that respect. And I have asked each of them, they've given me some detailed lists, so they have priorities on there as well. So the $6,000 covers their entire wish list, and we can prioritize as, as need be on that. We come down to testing and supplies. The additional monies, believe it or not, that $8,000 is just for protocols for the current tests we have. And I know that if, if you don't sign on the line for these things, it's easy to not understand how much these are. But it is amazing that when we have to order the, the protocols, so the things that the people fill out, whether it be parents filling them out, or teachers filling out, or the actual testers filling out these forms as they're testing the children, just for the WJ3 alone, usually it's about $1,800 a year to get those forms in. We can't copy them. Back in the day, I used to copy them. We can't do that anymore. So that's why that, that line item is there. So for district-wide, it's, it's about $8,500 this year. I added up all of the testing forms that people were asking for. The additional money is in there is for the new WJ4 kits when they come out in the fall. We've got to get ahead of the game on this, and once those new kits come out, they haven't come out, they haven't done a revised copy since 2001. And I know a lot of people aren't always happy with the WJ3 test. It goes between having the WISK and the Wyatt and having the WJ3 cognitive and achievement. I really like the WJ3 cognitive and achievement because they're so closely interrelated. And it's an easier, I think it's an easier test to give in some respects. You can get certain information from both of them, but it would be great that once these tests are out, we're able to update them and show that we have the current best out there to go ahead and give our, give our students and our teachers. And so that's why it piggybacks, too, with that PD piece on having them trained in it, too. And, oh, also with that, my thought on that is, right now, I'm only asking for three kits, one per school, but the goal would be to have one kit per two, per two grade levels, so that it could share. Because if you've got a caseload of 20 students and five of them are getting evaluated at a time, sometimes it gets crazy with having to share kits. But for right now, Anders, it's a big investment in the WJ3 or the WJ4 kits. So I would go, I would start with three this year, and then move on either looking at the grant to fund additional kits for next year or the following year, come back with additional kits to add to that. Transportation, that's been increased as well. We currently only have $372 left for transportation. Though, we've already got all of our runs covered, so that's fine. The $372 is, if we have any additional move-ins to the district and we have to pay for an additional run, it's going to be more than $372 after two days. So in looking at that, I went ahead and put a flat 5% increase on our transportation line item to increase that for next year. The next line item, special education equipment. That's the FM systems, okay? The ones that I talked about, having the receivers or the audiological equipment for students. A lot more than special ed students are needing this. A lot of times we're seeing them in 504 plans as well, and we're still obligated to, to meet those needs, too. We've already increased this line item this year by $1,500, and we're projected to need at least $2,000 more for an additional kit that, or additional FM system we need for a student this year. So that's why it's such a big increase from $900 budgeted last year to $4,000 for next year. And on that, too, we, when we order them, we do make sure we order the insurance and everything so that we, we don't have to buy a new kit every time. If something breaks, we can send it back. And they do have good warranties, so it's not unnecessary equipment. And we do try, like I said, to, to pick and choose from pieces to, to meet the needs as new students come up and need, need new equipment. On private tuitions this year, we have had, let me see, there are two OSD program increases, meaning that two private day programs have applied for increases above and beyond. They've told us that right now, we can, we should project 1.053% across the board, or no, 1.53% across the board for tuition increases. There are two of our out-of-district placements that have applied for, for a cost above and beyond that. It hasn't been approved yet, but for the most part, they usually are. So that's why that is in there. If you see two, if you look down under Loxie's column where it says superintendent approval, you can see here that just with that increase of the 1.53%, our district, out-of-district costs have already increased $28,000, $28,348. So it's almost like a collaborative placement already. Just from, if we kept it current with the same number of students this year to next year, it's going to increase by that much anyways. We do have two possible transition students coming back. We do have one student who did drop out. I did not put a budget in for that, but that is a potential if that student comes back. I just knew that the budget line was already up so much that I didn't want to put so many additional placements in there that it would be unrealistic and not, and not a true measure of what we need. I tend to not pad my budget, so to speak, with four to five to six different placements that might come up. I try to be as realistic as I can for you all, what I like to do. And it all depends on which way the committee wants to go. We can put in two additional placements, knowing that that might be coming up. The other way that I've done it in the past, too, is I don't move a student out of district, out of the tuition budget until they have officially graduated. So even if we think they're going to graduate in June, you're going to see them in my budget until next year. And then we might see a cost savings come in the fall, because the reality is sometimes students don't up until May or the beginning of June, they end up not graduating. So there's really two different mindsets. I'll work with Loxie, I'll work with you all, in whatever way you want to go with it. But I do try to be as realistic as I can, taking what we have now. What I do know is coming down the pike for that. We do have one student only aging out this year in April. That's unusual. We don't have a big bubble this year. We don't have a lot of kids graduating, and we only have that one aging out this year. And we do have a student who, right now, is in a hospital program, and if they transfer to, they, the hospital wants to move that child to a, to a group home setting. And so when that child moves to a group home setting, we will have to assume a day, a day cost, unless we can transport her back if she's within an hour distance. I'll work to see what we need to do to transport back to the district. In the collaborative settings, we have one new potential placement. One has transitioned back this year, which is great, and we have one program that is closing, and we need to find a new placement. So that, I kept the, the budget on that line item the same for the cost, but it may increase, it may decrease a little bit depending on, on what program we're able to find for that child. I've also anticipated down below the circuit breaker reimbursement. We've done it at 65%, 70%, and 75%, just to give some flexibility. Real early in the school year to be saying, if they're going to go ahead and fund us at 75% again, I would love to say that that's going to be the case. Trends will tell me that we may not see 75 again. Let's hope for 72, 73. But I always want to try to be realistic and have that, have that worst-case scenario down there, which I think is a 65. And I, I don't think it'll come in at 65, but I want to just put it out there just in case, so we have those numbers to work with. And I know that I have not taken the circuit breaker amount and applied it to these budget figures, so that's a difference. I know that it's been done in the past. We do apply our circuit breaker monies right towards our out-of-district costs. So what you're seeing there is our true actual costs, and then you can look below and see what the anticipated is to try to offset that number in the future.
So this is purely a presentation issue?
Mm-hmm.
But if we go to the FinCom and show us a seven, $600,000 increase in out-of-district placements, and it would be much better to not get into the long discussion about why we're showing our accounting differently this year? So what I'd recommend is you pick one approach and either retroactively go back to the past years and update the out-of-district placement numbers so that they don't have the circuit breaker funds taken out of them, or
Or we'll
Just be consistent, so that, so that we don't, because that's going to be, that's a... I don't see a need to create the discussion around that apparent increase, which isn't an actual increase.
No, it's not. It's just, it's how it's presented, and that's fine. I have no problems with that. I can work with
And on the total expenses as well, because, you know, that's, I guarantee you, knowing our FinCom, that's the sort of thing that's going to jump out and become a, an unnecessarily long discussion topic.
That's fine.
Yes, so currently, the total there for FY14 would be right at 2.2 million, and the increase up to 2.4 because 575,000 is out of that total line at this point in time for FY14, because it's down in the circuit breaker line.
Right, right.
Okay. Any questions from the committee?
I know that we've been seeing increasing numbers in out-of-school just for various reasons. Movins and, and, you know, changes in, in people's needs. Over the period that we're looking at, nine to 15, do you know what that increase would look like in, in the number of people being served out of district?
I don't understand your question. I'm sorry.
Okay. I know that some of the cost increases that we've been seeing in this line aren't just because the cost of, of the tuition is increasing. It's the cost of, it's the number of folks that are accessing that service. What, what, what does the trend look like? What's our current number? What?
Well, we have 24 right now in out-of-district placements. 24 is
In '09, that number was 10 or 11.
That, that's what I was looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
And do we have a strategy related to that? Is our goal to reduce out-of-district placements? What's, are we just taking it individually as it comes?
You know, we have to take it individually, but I have had the conversation with our out-of-district out-of-district coordinator about when we've gone through the list of students, which ones can we start having those conversations with at team meetings? What do we have in district that we can offer to bring that child back and to provide those services in district rather than an out-of-district placement? I think the BCBA will be key in having her in place to be able to see what we can do with that piece. I've asked her to come to some of the meetings as well. And so we're going to continue to have those conversations. It is very difficult to have students transition back. So the fact that we've had a couple already, I'm very happy to see that. That doesn't usually happen. But we have two on the horizon for next year that we're looking at, having those discussions at team meetings with, you know, can we provide those services now in Lunenburg? And what would it look like? And what do we need to put in place to make that happen?
And there is the move-in element here, and I think it will be helpful for us to go back and look at this trend and see what was accounted for in terms of students moving into the district that may have already been in placements versus those students that have been with us and whose needs have exceeded what we're able to provide given our programming capacity here. Because I think that is illuminating. I have a sense of what that is, but it's best for us to go down and go back and really look at that.
Right. And historically, if I remember correctly, part of the reason we have not been able to create programs for some students in district is because of the small number of statistics, right? For one and two students. Now, if we're starting to talk about a dozen students, it's conceivable that there could be a critical mass of students where we could create a new program in the district that would enable, I don't know.
Yep.
So we don't have visibility into the needs.
Space is always an issue as well.
Space is an issue, but we have a whole empty elementary school around here. Not entirely empty. I think space is a different kind of issue than it used to be. Okay. Any other questions? My one last question is, did we move legal services into the district? Is that why we have zero there?
Yes.
Okay. So it's all accounted for in one lump? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Ice hockey, Mr. Short.
Not too far off, Mr. Short. Eight o'clock? Just on time.
Right on time.
Good evening. So it's that time of year again. We're just coming for the approval for the annual trip to Waterville Valley. The trip has not changed in any way this year, the itinerary. Literally, I just had to change the dates on the itinerary that I gave you. Hotel's the same, transportation's the same, people going are the same. It's still completely funded by the Booster Club and Mr. Dupree, you know, with the exception of like a lunch and a little bit of spending money. We anticipate taking around 30 students from Lunenburg Air Shirley. And we've done the trip almost for 10 years now, I think, between, we went to Lake Placid and Albany and a couple of different places, but we've been at Waterville for at least, at least six or seven years. So we're just here again to get the official approval and your blessings.
And I think, Mr. Short, you really point out that the value of the trip is really, especially I think since this is a co-op team, so we are bringing students from other schools to participate on this team?
Yes. The, our numbers actually have gone up a little bit with, we're not at 50/50. We're probably at about 60/40 or 65/35 with, you know, Lunenburg being the higher number. But there's quite a few kids that will play in both the JV and the varsity from Air and Shirley. And so it's a great opportunity for them to meet the Lunenburg kids if they've never met them before and, you know, get used to, you know, orientate each other as, you know, they're going to be teammates for the next three months and that whole process, which is unique when you have a co-op team like this. You know, we've done a lot, some of the co-ops in the, with the different high schools, the host is really just the, is the team, you know, like so different, you know, Littleton is just Littleton, and their host is kind of just plays with them. And we've done a lot to really make it like a combination, you know, the Jersey, say, LAS, and this trip just adds to that. We want the kids to all feel, you know, the Air Shirley kids and the Lunenburg kids to feel like it's their team and their program. We hope that that continues to help the program keep going.
That's great. Questions?
I'll make the motion to...
Let's have a recommendation if you don't want to.
I'm sorry, of course. My apologies.
I just want to thank the coaches and the boosters once again for bringing this forward. It is a very positive team-building activity, and it has also been an activity that our students have always received a lot of accolades in terms of their level of behavior. And it makes it much, much easier each year to recommend it to you for approval because they've never disappointed us in terms of how they've conducted themselves and, you know, their expression of gratitude for the booster club who are really doing a lot of things to make sure that this happens for the students.
Yeah. I mean, this is actually a good opportunity, just, you know, the boosters are the parents that are, you know, and the parents change every four years. And we've had great parents the entire time I've been here. But Greg Dupree, who's our booster club president, he's really, he's still running the show. His son Chad graduated like 14 years ago. Literally, he's still running the boosters, the canned trailer on Mass Ave, that's, he puts it out every Friday, brings it in every Sunday. He's now solely in charge of taking care of those deposits, collecting the money. You know, he goes on the trip with us, he schedules the trip. I mean, he's literally like a general manager for a high school team. So, you know, the program, me, the school, the town, everybody, enough thanks cannot be, you know, put out to Mr. Dupree and the time that he's put in. And really, this trip is pretty much funded by him and his efforts, so a big thanks to him.
Absolutely. But I do recommend approval.
Great. Okay, Mike, go ahead.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, we have to, so the LEA has officially written requesting that we begin negotiating a contract, since our current contract expires on 30th of June this year, 2014, sorry. And so we need to select a negotiating team. So, any thoughts? I'm more than happy to participate in that.
We were all happy that you would be participating.
Yes, we're all happy to have you participate.
But I'm not happy to participate alone on that. Do you guys have any thoughts on, do you want to engage in this discussion? No?
Do you want us to draw straws?
I don't think my time's going to be, I think I'm going to be able to do that as well.
And Mr. Blake is participating, as you will recall, on the negotiations that have started with the paraprofessionals.
I have not, as of yet, done any negotiating, so I would be happy to do this.
Okay. Does that work for everyone?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Great. Then we'll, I'll contact Mary and we'll start the process. Okay, a FLAC annual report, which you've shared with us.
Yes, as part of the reorganizations of collaboratives and process and procedures, more than reorganization of the collaboratives themselves, there is an annual report that is now submitted to each one of the boards. And this is from our FLAC collaborative, the only collaborative that we here in Lunenburg belong to. It provides the census and referral data, as well as the program updates on the programs that the FLAC collaborative operates. The Caldwell Alternative Middle and High School is budgeted for 38 students. Currently, the program has 27 students participating. Caldwell Alternatives has been expanding their transition and vocational assessments. This is a program that students from Lunenburg have benefited from and participated in in the past and really made a difference for the students. A very strong program. Then, of course, Caldwell Elementary is located there at the Thomas C. Passios Building. It's budgeted for 25 students. It currently has 23 students, two active referrals. And I believe last year, they had, referrals tend to pick up over the course of the year. So I would anticipate that that program may end up with 30 or more enrolled at some point in time. They have an Autism Spectrum Disorder and Developmental Disabilities Program for students ages 5 through 22. The program's budgeted for 50 students, and currently, the program has 43 students. Now, that particular program is located across classrooms in general education schools in member districts. So all 50 of those students are not in one place, one setting, but in age-appropriate, building-appropriate, in classrooms within our collaborative schools. And then there's a 45-day program for an evaluation program. FLAC also provides professional developmental, professional development opportunities for member districts, as well as those outside the districts. And those are very helpful in terms of things like Ms. Bayhosh talked about, in terms of providing professional development to our specialized staff. When we have professionals who don't necessarily have several peers within their one school or even their district, being able to join together with the collaborative for professional development is effective on many levels, as well as being cost-efficient. And they have also provided in this report a list of what consultations, as well as related services, they provide through the collaborative. And that ranges from teachers of the visually impaired, orientation and mobility teachers, as well as also some registered physical therapists. And so those are a little bit about that. We'll post this entire report at the website, just as a member district. It's also available at FLAC's website and make it available in each one of our buildings.
That's great. Thank you. And we're up to old business. We have no old business, or is there any public comment from the board? Public comment from our public? Come on up, Bob.
PTO met on Monday night in our monthly meeting, and we voted on the unanimously in support of the middle-high school building project. And we wanted to go on record to announce that this evening.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for that.
And do you mind just saying who you are and where you're from?
Bob Meeklerak, and a membership in the PTO chair.
Excellent. Thank you, Bob. That's great news.
Thank you so much for telling us, Bob. That's wonderful news.
Any other public comment? Nope. All right, so reports. I do not have a FinCom report, so school councils. Okay, PTO, we just had some input from the PTO. Anything else?
I know the principals and Ms. Bayhosh were at the PTO and giving updates. Those were well-received.
And they don't have their exact numbers for the haunted house yet, but it appears that they raised somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,800.
Wonderful. That's outstanding.
Which was, I think, they said, consistent with what they had.
Yes, it was consistent with what we had last year.
Last year.
This year, from 6:30 till the very end, it was a constant wait in line, so it was very well-received this year.
They also have 202 members and are on track to hopefully have a record-breaking number of members for this year. So that was exciting news.
Okay. Policy. So I think I'd like to, at our next meeting, discuss maybe reconstituting the policy subcommittee, since it seems not to be able to get together. Okay, capital planning?
We are actually meeting tomorrow with the superintendent and Mr. Londa to go over the school capital plan.
And Mr. Maladrenus will be there as well.
Oh, yes, for technology. Yep.
Excellent. Great. Wellness advisory?
We met last week, and I cannot for the life of me remember what we talked about. I was trying to make notes earlier, and I was like, what did we talk about?
We have continued to work with collecting the information relative to working with our local police department and updating our safety procedures, lockdown procedures, and that's ongoing. In fact, the chief and Ms. LaSerta and I met this afternoon, and Mr. Londa is working on some projects for us as well. So that's an ongoing process. And also, we talked a little bit more about the start times and continuing to look at reviewing the research around start times for high school students and looking towards the future about any opportunities that may be there to perhaps push back in the morning the start time for the high school in response to the very clear data about students' sleep patterns and what it means for their education.
Okay. PACSEL, is there been a PACSEL meeting?
Juliana?
Do you mind coming up and?
So at the PACSEL meeting, we talked about collaborating with the Fitchburg PACSEL, the Fitchburg PAC, to see about sharing some of those resources and professional development opportunities. They also talked about they're now on Facebook as a, you can search and find them on Facebook. And they're also, they have a link on our website from special services that they're going to be updating. And so they do have on special services the link. We do have the meetings for the rest of the year, and it looks like they're going to be on Fridays once a month at 11:00 a.m.
Super. Thank you. Okay, building reuse?
I had it on Monday, but I was unable to attend.
Okay. And is there an other committee? Anybody else? No? Any items for future discussion that we haven't already?
We need to, at some point, talk about scheduling workshops to get those goals.
We do. I was thinking that it might make sense to wait until we get to the vote.
Okay, and schedule after that when we know what's happening. That makes sense. Just wanted to...
Unless you disagree, but...
Yeah, no, that's great. I just wanted to make sure it was on our...
Yeah, it's on my radar.
Most of our, I think that we wanted to collaborate on was contingent upon it.
Yeah. It was all contingent.
I think there were some budgetary aspects to a couple of your goals that we'll want to just be conscientious about. I think that that won't be problematic. The superintendent's recommended budget will need to be before you in December, and we'll make some assumptions just based upon our current realities and with regard to fees.
So this year, we were putting together plans.
Okay.
So the impact on the budget would be not until we were talking about it next year.
Okay. Ah, I got ahead of you. I thought we were talking this year.
Yeah, so we intended to figure out what we were going to do by April so that we could implement it in the next year.
My apologies.
No, but I understand. It would be nice if we were more efficient, but that's, I think, the limit of what we were at least willing to sign up for.
Okay.
Okay, any other items? You guys have? Okay, we do need executive session and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23B, Paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the paraprofessionals union, and we will not be returning to open session.
So moved.
Okay, Todd? We have to do a roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Happy Diwali.